Good morning, members. It's time and we have a quorum. I now call to order the meeting. Before I invite the administration and deputations into the chamber, may I first of all consult members on the arrangements of the meeting today? There are fifty-five deputations and seventy-nine individuals attending the meeting today. There are four sessions to the meeting. Each session will be about two hours. From one fifteen to two thirty P M, that will be our lunch break. In every session, I will allow the deputations to speak first, or the individuals. They will speak for three minutes each. And after they've spoken, I will invite members to ask questions or make comments. And then I will ask the administration to give a brief response. Members, do you agree to these arrangements, please? No comments? In that case, let's invite the administration and the deputations into the conference room. Thank you. Now, declaration. In the Anti-Northeast, I own some land. How many plots of land do you remember, Chairman? I do not remember. Well, this is a rather vague declaration. I don't want our committee to have to handle your case in future. But I have declared my interest. I would like to welcome the administration representatives, representatives of deputations and individuals to the meeting. The attendance list is tabled. I will not introduce you one by one. Now, can I invite the deputation representatives to speak? Each deputation representative or individual attending the session today will have three minutes to speak. To facilitate a smooth conduct of the meeting, the secretariat has prepared a timer with a beeping device. I would like to remind the deputations and individuals, the written submissions and the oral representations you are going to make do not enjoy any protection under the Legislative Council Propose and Privileges Ordinance, Cap 382. First, Mr. Julian Ken. Mr. Chairman, from the website of the Anti-Northeast study, we see that since the eighties, the administrations were explaining the project to the public. It seems that it's done a lot. But today, what I'd like to tell you is that your consultation was only conducted in villages which are to be affected and you've only done briefings at district councils. You've also collected views from professional bodies. You did not conduct a consultation that allowed the public to fully understand the project and give their views accordingly. Now, from the TV, we see that the administration has been doing advertisements on the study. It's to give project a bright future for the public. But then people cannot really get the details of the project. In the public engagement, stage one and stage two, there were no advertisements. It's only in stage three, when you're about to make a decision, then you advertising about the project. Isn't that a waste of public money? If you want the public to fully understand the project, it's actually not difficult. But the government is only doing it superficially. It's only doing these short briefings. And then when it's time to make a decision, then you're trying to make use of the media to publicize the project and garner support. Now, in Hong Kong, we have very little land. We have a huge population. It's important that we use land effectively. For mainly new lands, only one way to cope with the demands. But then we must first have a population policy. Otherwise, we wouldn't know how much housing we need to provide. And also, for the Anti-Northeast, it's far away from the urban district. It's really a place that people could enjoy good living. Now, there is a figure provided. The new project, the new NDAs would provide fifty-two thousand jobs for Hong Kong. I really doubt the figure. Tinshe Way is a good example. And the Work Incentive Transport Subsidy Scheme is a policy to demonstrate the problem. Now, the Long Chong Ying started considering opening up that part of the L T. And then in two thousand and seven, there was media report in Shenzhen and Guangzhou that there are plans to integrate Hong Kong and Shenzhen. So I have every reason to doubt that the NE East study is not just about providing land for Hong Kong. It's about integration, which is part of the state policies. Now, if it's a bad policy, it will cause a lot of family problems. The land belongs to the people. We must have the endorsement of the public when we use land. The administration has to explain clearly this worries about integration between Shenzhen and Hong Kong. But having heard the administration, I really doubt that there are other ulterior motives on the part of the administration. Next, Mr. Louis Lung of the Real Estate Developers Association of Hong Kong will speak. The reader supports the principles of the plan to develop the Anti-Northeast. But on the ways to implement this strategy, we have some reservations about the current proposals. We have already submitted a paper to the administration. That's paper number CB1243, stroke twelve to thirteen, bracket oh one of the panel papers. So I won't go into the details. I'd just like to highlight a few salient points. First, there are some terms used that have a labeling effect. I don't think we should just look at the superficial side of things. We have to really study the content of the study. For example, in this public engagement, there's term like the conventional new town development model, the conventional new town approach. Now, that is a C N T A. Is it true that we just resume land that's privately owned en masse and then we will develop the land? Is that really the conventional approach? In the past, when there were land re-assumption exercises, was it the case that landowners were allowed to participate in the project? For example, the use of letters A and B? And is this the approach this time round? The land re-assumption approach proposed here goes against the policy principles of the administration. Now, in a paper submitted by the administration to the Leshko, it said that there are views that the government could consider resuming private land and then auction it. And the administration believes that's not feasible. In accordance with Section Three of the Land Reassumption Ordinance, land resume must be for public purposes. The resumption of privately owned land for the development of another private land owner, it would be most controversial. And also, if there is exchange of land with private landowners so that the project could be implemented early, that makes better sense. Now, that's what the administration said. But now the administration is going back on its own words. Why? And is it really true that a public-private partnership, PPP, would lead to collusion between the government and the private sector? But actually, there are plenty of examples of PPP. For example, the previous land development corporation, when it redeveloped old areas, there was always private participation. So please refer to our paper for details. Next, Mr. Lem Cam Kui of the Takuling District Rural Committee. Thank you. In two thousand and eight, the administration started consulting on this NT-NE study. Now, we fully support this plan because there will be residential development as well as job opportunities. There will be educational facilities and leisure facilities as well. We do not believe this is a concept about building a special administrative region within a special administrative region. Rather, we believe the Northeast NT area, new development areas planning and engineering study, N E N D A study, is a project for the people of Hong Kong. We believe that in future, if the project could be implemented in the next decade, it will create jobs for the construction industry. And after the Kai-Tech projects completed, or the West Kowloon projects completed, then construction workers would find work in relation to the N E N D As' projects. Now, for the Pingchee-Takuling area, thirty percent would be residential development and twenty percent would be for job creation and public leisure facilities. There is not public housing included in Pingchee. And actually, in this area, it's not suitable to develop public housing because there is not yet the transport network to support it. So even if we build public housing in Pingchee-Takuling, people wouldn't be interested. And then, in the public engagement stage two, the administration proposed the PPP model for the development of new towns. But then in two thousand and eleven, in the public engagement stage three, the administration switched to a conventional new town approach, C N T A. The C N T A has merit that it means we could compete all the supporting facilities and all the infrastructure works at the same time. But of course, there must be a model that's acceptable to landowners in the development of new towns. Now, our committee has had a lot of discussions with the villagers. Some have voiced opposition. They would like to be resettled, rehoused in situ in Takuling. We believe it can be done. Thank you. If you have written submission, then it's fine. Next, Ms. Gabrielle Ho from Greensands. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the N E N D A study, there have been various stages of public engagement. But we hope that the public will truly listen to the views of the public in this round of consultation. Now, the administration has answered many of the questions. And we'd like the government officials to consider very carefully all the views. Just now, there's mention of the population policy. What is our population policy? Is it the case that our population could keep growing? Is it true that our projections are truly accurate? I hope the administration would do more research and study. We know that there is limited land in Hong Kong. We need to have a long-term policy. And for the three new development areas, NDAs, they are all near the boundary zone. So our question is, why is it that all three NDAs are closed to the boundary? And what about existing users? Have they been taken into account? What would be the criteria for the resumption of land? And what are the criteria used in imposing term planning on these areas? Now, there are much agricultural activities in these areas, in particular, organic farming activities. And we have a shortage of such activities in Hong Kong, actually. We have put forward our submission. We'd just like to highlight the various options we've proposed. For example, Kootong South, there is a golf course, hundred and seventy hectares. And that's why we're proposing to administration and members this as an alternative. Is it really the case that we have to resume land and destroy all the villages, destroy all the farming activities, and build on these sites? Now, for these sites, there are other uses. So why can't we consider alternatives? And in terms of the housing mix, we hope the administration will take that into account. We would like to propose public housing, H O S, and private housing all with a suitable mix. Because at first, the administration only proposed public housing and private housing. But we believe H O S housing is important as well. And H O S is a form of private housing without giving the developers the opportunity to reap huge profit. So I think the government should really reconsider the housing mix. Thank you.
Mr. Chan Kung said, "I'm here to express my views on the NE NT development. I have three points to make. First of all, Hong Kong is a very small place with huge population. Well, recently, the administration has introduced measures to combat property market speculation. But this is one of the ways to cool down the property market. Well, there are plots of land in the new territories where our development, so it is unwise to start reclamation outside the Victoria Harbour. Well, people have to travel a long journey to go to the urban districts to work. And the NE NT development can address their housing and employment needs so that they don't need to take long trips to work. And we know that there are many vacant lots in the new territories currently used as car recycle yards and dumping grounds. So these plots of land should be used for development as well. We have a hundred and fifty thousand residents who might be affected, but then they will be rehoused. For those who'd like to resume agricultural activities to the north of Long Valley and the other spots, they would be allowed to do so. So this should be supported. And I'd like to say something on the Hong Kong-Mainland integration as well. I'm not worried about that because this is inevitable with more exchange of information and communication. This is the inevitable trend. But most importantly, will there be mainlandization of Hong Kong? Or will Hong Kong be able to influence the mainland? I think that in the end, Hong Kong will influence the mainland because we should be confident. We should be confident in our system and we must uphold our core values. And they are tolerance and that we should support new arrivals. We should not undermine the development, and this is very unwise. I hope that the opposing members in this session can listen to our views and consider the views for the sake of the benefits of Hong Kong people. Thank you. Next, Ms. Yip Ngotong from D A B.
Thank you, Chairman. On behalf of D A B, I support this project. We see that for the Northeast NT development, there is a need and urgency for developments. And I have three salient points to make. First of all, referring to the P E three digest. According to the administration's proposal, the seven hundred and eighty-seven hectares of land can accommodate a hundred and fifty thousand people. I think the more can be accommodated because in the past, in the eighties, the N D A covered an area of seven hundred and sixty-eight hectares and then it accommodated two hundred and ninety thousand people. And for Hong Shui Keo, when it was developed, the land covered four hundred and fifty hectares, but then it accommodated as many as five hundred and sixty thousand people. So we think that the Northeast NT development will be able to cope with the new population policy. And we think that the public-private housing mix can be increased so that there'll be a fifty-fifty ratio so that more public housings can be built for residents. Thirdly, I think that transportation facilities should also be provided after the development is completed. Railway is the backbone of the transportation system in the NE NT. But then it is now getting more and more saturated. And every day, people have to travel on jam-packed transport. With a hundred and fifty thousand more residents, if they only rely on the East Rail as the main means of transport, the system may not be able to accommodate the new population. So the D A B urges for the development of the North Link. On the one hand, it can ease the burden of the pressure of the East Rail. It can also link up the two sides. And in the long run, the whole railway system can be improved so that local residents' needs, travel needs can be addressed and our transportation network can be further refined. So in the NE NT development, improvements should be made to the transport network. And the planning and the design of the network should be finalized as soon as possible. Next, Mr. Nam Siu-Fu from Kootong North. For the previous two chief executives, they talked about developing the NE NT into a mission-free city and an environmentally friendly city. And over the past years, the developers have been buying land in the NE NT for potential development. And since the two thousand and eight, there have been three public engagement exercises. In the coming days, the administration will finalize the implementation approach of the three-in-one development. For villages in Kootong North, they have been suffering for over a decade. I also exchanged views with local villagers. And this is our conclusion. If we go ahead with the development, the administration should consider the rehousing arrangements of Kootong North Village and the needs of local villages should be addressed. The original lifestyle of villages should be preserved. And if this plan is shelved again, then the administration should let us know for how long it will be shelved so that local villagers can make plans for maintaining or repairing their homes. And private land in the area should be developed so as to avoid facing a pressure from private developers. We have had many discussions. The administration only focused on future development. But no matter what the future development is, our local villagers will be evicted or driven away. So you should tell us how the village would be and where the village would be rehoused and how we can settle in another area. Because it's pointless to talk about future developments. We are being driven away already. Thank you. Next, Ms. Wong Chatai from the Association of Local Farmers in the New Territories. Chairman, members, good morning. I am Ms. Wong Chatai. I'd like to express my views on the NE NT development. First of all, I support it. There are too many plots of vacant or derelict land, agricultural land in NT, and farmers cannot practice farming there. So we should make use of the opportunity to develop the NE NT and there should be more agricultural land for farming. And the wetland in the NE NT should also be conserved. And there should be proper planning and conservation of the wetland so that the ecological value can be preserved and local agricultural farming can be practiced. And subsidies should be provided for the construction of rain shelters, etc., so that value can be added to agricultural activities so that farmers can benefit. And in resuming land, reasonable compensation should be given to farmers. For example, subsidies for seedlings and that should also be local rehousing arrangements. And the administration should not outsource farming so that we can practice farming locally so that the society can benefit. Next, Mr. John Chong from Justice and Peace Commission of Hong Kong Catholic Diocese. Ever since the eleven-five-year plan, there have been many projects championing Hong Kong-Mainland economic integration. In fact, this NE NT development is a large property project. And with the bypass and the new infrastructure projects, Shenzhen residents can live within this one-hour circle. And those who stand to benefit would be consortiers and property developers. We think that the project should be explained to the public full and frank. It should not be given as an excuse to let the private developers benefit. Why is it that the low-density residential sites are planned when we need more housing? When we talk about a small place and huge population, and this is just empty talk? According to an expert's article, the administration has all along been hiding the fact that there are over two thousand hectares of vacant government land. But all along, the administration is cheating Hong Kong people, telling Hong Kong people that there is insufficient land. This is a pretext for the Shenzhen-Hong Kong integration projects. The Justice and Peace Commission believes that development is based on people and people will stand to benefit. And on this basis, the residents should be able to retain their original living style. And for the villagers living in Kootong, Pingche, Takuling, etc., they were locally born, they want to retain their own style. So our commission suggests that agricultural land in the NENT should be developed. Again, the administration has created an illusion saying that the agriculture activities in Hong Kong are dwindling. But then, there should be three conditions for resuming farming. There should be research and young people should be attracted to join the industry and there should be room for farmers to survive. Next, Ms. Chan Tong Tai from Kootong Vegetable Marketing Credit Corporation Society Limited. Good morning, Chairman members. I am Chan Tong Tai from Kootong Vegetable Marketing Credit Co-op Society. Our families have been living in Kootong for generations. And my grandfather was actually a founding member of the Co-op Society. And at this peak, we have close to 1,000 members. We have established this Co-op Society for 61 years. And we hope that assistance could and the co-op assistance could be given to the Co-op Society to transport the vegetables to Changsha One Wholesale Market for sale. And more should be done to help us plant more healthy vegetables for the consumption of Hong Kong people. Thank you. Next, Mr. Lau Chen Kong from the Hong Kong Institute of Surveyors. Thank you, Chairman. The Hong Kong Institute of Surveyors is very concerned about the land and housing needs of Hong Kong people. With projected increase in the population and the existing population, there is much need for land and housing and NENT can provide a very important source of land. And therefore, we should be concerned about the implementation approach of the NENT development. Huge costs are involved in developing a new town. And in terms of the population density planned for these NDAs, at present, the ratio is 284 people per hectare. But the standard should be 400 people per hectare. So we should consider increasing the density in order to make better use of the land resources. And as for the conventional new town approach, this is put forward as the approach to resuming land. But in the past, when we developed new towns in the New Territories, we allowed land exchange arrangements. We allowed landowners to take part in the private development in the new town to carry out land exchange so that land resumption can be reduced and so that the timetable for development can be efficiently compressed. So we urge the administration to carefully consider allowing suitable private landowners to carry out land exchange in the NENT, NDAs. And the conventional new town approach, TNTA. In terms of residential and commercial developments, well, if the administration is solely in charge of resumption of land, private developers may be seriously affected as they may not know the way forward. In terms of compensation, the compensation criteria should be higher than that for the Chaoyun Village, we believe. And the information should be disclosed to the public as soon as possible. And for Section 12C of the Land Resumption Ordinance, it should be reviewed as soon as possible. Next, Mr. Pang Wah Ying from Fan Ling District Rural Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, we're positive about the administration's proposed NENT/DA development. But the administration has never considered how the NDAs can integrate with existing areas. Because in Fan Ling, there will be a number of private property developments, some high-rise buildings as well as luxurious homes. In particular, there will be developments along the river side. So how can these new developments tied in with the existing areas? The administration has never given it a thought. And how can the economic activities in the older areas be revitalized? Or is it the case that the administration would only focus on the development of NDAs and new areas but not the livelihood of existing residents? Should they be left to themselves? Well, it said that there is a riverside park and it's quite long. And the riverside park will only be developed in front of some private property developments. And then, at quite a close distance from the end of this riverside park, a fanling bypass will be built. Why is it that a depressed road will be constructed for the private section but a viaduct section will be built for other parts? It has a negative impact, a visual impact, an environmental impact. So more should be done to consider the impact. Well, the administration also talks about increasing job opportunities. But I've heard from government officials that, in fact, in Fan Ling, there aren't many job opportunities but they can travel to Kootong and other areas because they will have a very good transport network. Well, I really need to criticize that. Also, so far, the administration or the consultant hasn't shown any sincerity because they just talk about their plan without listening to our views.
Before the next deputation speaks, may I ask deputations to submit your written speech to the secretariat so that we can collect your views? Next, we have Ms. Jody O'Young from Shenghim Tong Village. Thank you, Chairman. I do not have any written speech today. I do not oppose or against or for the development plan. In fact, the development plan has been here for a long time. We were briefed on the plan by some representatives from the Rural Committee. I've been to many of these forums. And as the village representative, I just wonder whether the Rural Committee, the consultancy have respected us. We, I really doubt that. They just give us mean empty words. They present to outsiders that they have done their jobs. This is a very, this is a mega project. And as village representative, because of this mega project, we have to stop all our minor works projects. Now, what sort of consultant companies the administration has engaged? Were there really nice ones? Because before I came here, they gave us a letter saying that they would implement our views. Now, people tend to focus on land resumption. However, you disregard the fact that there will be a flyover just over our village. This is really a mega project. And yet, no one come to our village to talk to the village representatives or the villagers. It's just us asking the administration to come here to talk to us. Do you regard this as respecting us? I don't think so. Now, maybe we have similar views today. Still, I hope the administration and district councillors will seriously consider our views. People may think that new NT residents are obstructing development. No, time has changed. You have a lot of crisis. Let's see who in the administration can deal with them and handle them. Next speaker, Mr. Lee Chi Wing, Shaotin District Councillor. I'm Lee from Shaotin. I support the expeditions implementation of the NENT development so that we can build housing to address the housing needs of Hong Kong people. I have the following five points to make. First, transportation. Shaotin, Chunwan and Changkuanou, these new towns, we should make reference to these successful examples. We should also learn a lesson from the failure in Chunmoon. I think we should build on the railway system so that the residents can come to the urban area to work. And I think we should also speed up the building of North Railway. For PLH, HOS and private housing, the ratio should be 4-4-3. We should also raise the ratio for elderly people. In fact, the last administration has free, froze, frozen the HOS construction. So I think S Y L N has to work on this now. We should also look at how we can build country park there. I hope we can release more land, country. And fourth, we should communicate with the local residents in terms of rehousing and compensation to give them better arrangement. I think we should give a better name to the NDAs because name matters. We can consider the existing, the names of existing areas and villages. For example, Longyok Tao or Shatokook to give a nice name to the NDA. You can consult the Rural Committee, the villagers on this matter. For plot ratio, we can make reference with that in the urban area. You do not have to stick to the ones in an NT in building flats there. We should also have better supplementary infrastructure. We should also conserve NT culture. For example, we can have museums there to teach the next generations about the culture in New Territories. Next, Mr. Oh from the Democratic Party. Good morning. NENT development has generated lots of public discussions. We show our great concern because this matter, for this matter, the administration has been dodging many questions. We wonder if this is all about mainland-Hong Kong integration? Are we building a city for wealthy mainlanders? How much of the land will be for HOS, will be for public housing? The government has 2,000 hectares of idle land. How come they are going to NENT for development? For the education, healthcare system, transportation, will you work on it to address the development need of Hong Kong? Now, all these questions have not been answered clearly by the administration. The, our party has the following suggestions. The administration keeps denying this project is for mainland-Hong Kong integration. But it's self-contradictory. That's why Hong Kong people are really worried. Local residents are really worried because it's only at the last minute that they are told about this NENT project and they were not properly consulted before. So we urge the administration to shelve the plan. Rather, you should have a comprehensive consultation first. And half of, at least half of the land in NT has already been bought by developers. Because they want to have expeditious development, they will use all sorts of means to drive away the local residents. And local residents will stand to lose their homes and their farming land. We oppose the public-private development approach. We urge the government to resume land first and to engage in development so that the interest of the local residents will be protected. Hong Kong people show more and more concern for conservation. That's why we should strike a balance between conservation and economic development. We should minimize the conflicts between these factors. Our suggestions have already been stated in the written submission. So I hope the members and the administration will consider our views. The NENT development should make sure that Hong Kong people take part in it so we can uphold our core values and come up with plans for proper development in Hong Kong. Next, Mr. Kwok Winkin from the Labour Party. The administration tells us the NENT development is here to address the economic needs, the housing needs of Hong Kong. And this project is going to be a green development. Can you really do that? No, I think the, you have made two wrong assumptions first about population projection. You say in 2008 that that in 1998, you said, you gave a different projection. But now this year, you gave us the projection will be 8.3 million. And but then later, you change and say that you say that by 2041, we will only rise to our 8.4 million by 2041. So this is the first mistake. And next, you did not review the land reserve you keep. In October, the Development Bureau released the figure. And you missed 160 hectares of land reserve, which covers land that has not got any planning use. Even for the planning side, you have all sorts of problems. You only allowed 20% of the land for PLH for low-density development, that is village-type development of houses six-story, not higher than six-story. Now, for all these developments, it amount to 40% of the land. What sort of planning is that? And you simply ignore conservation. Farming, farming activities are still active, but the government is trying to take away land. For areas with very few farming activities, you zoom it as agricultural land. This is really ridiculous. In 18, in 1985, the food production amount to 30% In 18, in 1985, the food production amount to 30% of our market, but now it amounts only to 2.3%. Even with all these mistakes, you still promote this project, this development. In consultation, we understand that some affected residents, they haven't been consulted. Now, people are misled by the TV advertisements they're making. They think this is a new, new town development. So I urge the government to stop airing the adverse and not to conceal any information about land reserve. And you should also take care of conservation and have, so that we can have diversified development in Hong Kong. Next, Mr. Peng from Civic Party. I urge the administration to shelf the plan because the consultation is not transparent. In fact, on the 22nd of September, the government held the last consultation forum in Shangshui. But then, on that day, the opposition voices were really strong. Still, the administration ignored people. This is a kind of false, fake consultation. We have had enough of this. If the administration does not change its attitude for any future policies, they tend to roll out, they will only see more opposition. The consultation, the only consultation was on the 22nd of September. So do you consider this as sufficient consultation? For village heads, for those villagers affected, for the non-indigenous villagers, they only came to know about the destruction of their homes at the very last stage. The consultation papers were only available in North Point and Sha Tin. What about, now, not in NT, not in NENT? You say you consult the villagers, but then they are left with no choice. Consultation on residential housing. Now, since 22nd of September, the land reserve figure released by the administration keeps decreasing from 2,100 hectare to 391.5 hectare. So for our party, we think the administration has not got a clear idea about the land reserve they've got. The development chief says that the NENT development should not be shelved, but does it mean that with, if we do not shelve it, the development will be stored altogether? Even before, before they get a clear idea about information, the administration insists on rolling out this plan because they propose to have low-density development. That means in the end, there will only be 53,000 flats. And we, next, we have Ms. Chen from Sustainable Ecology, Ecological Development. Good morning. I'm very glad to be here. We're here to protect our home. Now, perhaps some information has not been distributed, tabled to members, but I spent a short time on this. So later, when you receive it, I hope you will have a look. I want to sing a song to you. Maybe some of you have listened to this song, so you may like to share it with you. I stand in the street and I listen to the bustle of the city and people are busy. I am determined to serve the public and spread the messages, faith, hope and love. I'm very glad to see that some people are here today, not just to protect their own homes, but other people's home. When I, I feel very sad, especially when I'm down and people who love me leave me one by one. But then, because of these, I know how to, we should cherish love. So I hope, no matter what we plan to do, we will bear in mind, love is very important. Human beings are cleverer than computers. System, laws, all these are institutions created by human beings. When people love me, leave me, I stick with them till the last minute. There are several points I would like to make. Looking at basic law and the land policy, you understand that Hong Kong people haven't purchased any land. So let's not cheat ourselves and not, not to cheat others as well. My friend left because of, because he or she has not got any sufficient healthcare service. Now, look around and people of all ages, they do not lead a stable life. If we do not have any land, we may not be able to have sufficient food.
Mr. Hao Winkong from the Yin Kong Village. Thank you. I'm the village representative of Yin Kong Village in, at Long Yun. Now, I have exchanged views with many different groups. Now, there are farmers in Long Yun and there are villagers I've talked to. They've all asked the administration to conserve the Long Yun wet land. But the government's been talking about conservation in the past decade. But it's not really benefited the farmers or the villagers and the landowners there too. The government plans to resume farming land. I hope that there will be distinction drawn between organic farming land and inorganic farming land so that you could pay compensation accordingly. Then the two groups of farmers will not need to be locked in dispute because there's been a lot of dispute in the past decade. So for organic farming and regular farming, I hope that you will sub different zones and there will be a wholesale centre for organic farming produce. And there will be a research centre for organic farming so that farmers could keep working there at Long Yun Valley. Mr. Hao Kam Lam from the North District Council. Now, the NANT NDA study will bring about a major shift, change into the area. There are hundreds of thousands of families on waiting list for public housing that will help address their housing needs. So this is a good development. But to proceed with the development, first of all, the government must pay attention to the stakeholders involved. There's those who own land there. They must not be made the victims of development. They must be made the benefactors of development. So co-development, so that all could share in the fruits of development should be the way forward. Then everybody could all share in the fruits of development. And the, there is a village in one of the NANT NDAs, that's the Kootong Village. This is the largest village with the largest population that may be affected by the development. Now, this is a recognized village. There is a village representative elected by villagers on a one-person, one-vote basis. The village is recognized by the Hang Yi Kok as well. But affected villagers cannot see a future for themselves. There have been various rounds of consultation, advanced for in situ rehousing. They would like another site to be designated for the rebuilding of the village. But in all these rounds of consultation, they never see a site designated for this purpose. That's why Kootong villages are most concerned. Now, we would like to keep the character of the village. At the same time, we would like to introduce modern, elements of modern cities so that everybody could send to enjoy the success of development. Recently, an old people, an old person tells me that, well, his is a family of four. His house is dilapidated, but he does not proceed with repair because he doesn't know when his house may be taken back by the government. And another old person told me that he's been living in Kootong for decades. He really would like to be, to, to be in the same village. And then now his home is so cold, especially in winter. And that's why he'd like to see improvement to the environment. So we hope therefore the development would help to improve the living condition of all the villagers there. And then everybody will support the development. But then a detailed compensation package is not nowhere to be seen. And so this old man is really concerned. That's why we hope the government will soon roll out detailed compensation package. Next, Mr. Al Kwak Kuen from the Concerned Group of Subdivided Flat Tenants. First, I'd like to condemn the secretary for missing this meeting. I represent many of the subdivided flat tenants in Sem Sha Po and so on. Now, we must convey our stronger dissatisfaction to the administration. We don't want the administration to distort matters and put the subdivided flat tenants on the spot. You should provide more public housing in the urban areas to address the housing needs. As for the NANT NDA development, we have two points to make first. We should increase more public housing, but in the urban areas. In March, from March to November this year, in Tok Kwan, Ya Chi Mong, Sem Sha, Ya Chi Mong, Sem Sha Po, and so on, we visited over 400 subdivided flat tenants. 70% of the tenants are three-to-four-person household with only 100 square foot of living area. And they, 90% have to pay more than $3,000 in rent. And many of the subdivided flat tenants tell us they would only like to stay in the same district so that they could keep their social network that they now enjoy. And some tenants tell us that they are now living in the urban area. Why must all the poor people be driven away and moved to the NT? Is it a case that urban areas are only for the rich but not for the poor? Does the government only serve the rich and not the poor? Does the government believe that the subdivided flat tenants could be moved anywhere they like? And now there are 13 sites in Changsha One, all are private housing. None is a public rental housing site. And all these 13 sites were buildings where subdivided flat tenants lived. And now these are new, brand-new developments out of reach of the subdivided flat tenants. So when subdivided flat tenants pass by these developments, they can see that prosperity is not for them to enjoy. Now, we see that the district council is controlled by the establishment camp and those appointed by government. So we must, um, there must be more public housing in the urban areas and subdivided flat owners cannot be shoved around by the government. Now, and there's, you have not done any survey on the needs of subdivided flat tenants. Last time, when there was the fight at Fai Yun Street, the government took strong action to face out the subdivided flats. But after a year, we still see plenty of subdivided flats. We are time-born, but you don't have a rehousing policy. You just want to evict us. Now you're taking the NANT NDA study as a pretext. You don't care about our aspirations. Yes, we want to have proper housing, but we want to have proper housing in the urban areas. Thank you. Mr. Tem Ping Nam, Concerned Kootong Development Union. We would like, we have positive response, we would like the positive response to the NANT NDA study first. We would like the original village office of Kootong to be kept in the original site because that's a symbol of preserving Kootong village. We support what Mr. Hao Kam Lam and Mr. Lam Shi Fu, a village representative, said. That is, that we want in situ resettlement. We would like the government to preserve the village office of the Kootong. And on both sides of the village office, you should build housing for the resettlement of villagers in situ. The Kootong Vegetable Cooperative and Ms. Chen also gave her views, we support her views. That is, the cooperative should be kept at the same site. And before works start, the administration should make arrangement for farmers of Kootong to lease land from landowners in the Long Yun area so that we could continue for our farming operations. And Ms. Chen already made that point. Fourth, I've made three points, now the fourth point. We would like to address the plight of the shop and factory operators. For shops and restaurants affected, we would like the government to build a composite building so that the shops and restaurants affected by the redevelopment could be moved into this building for the continuous operation. As for the factories and plants, workshops, they should be moved into the commercial research and development areas destined in the plan. And then there should also be a school and church zone. And we would like the administration to build more public housing in HOS. Then that will help to address the housing needs in Hong Kong. Thank you. Next, Mr. Feng Song Lam from the Society of Friends. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm the chairman of the Society of Friends. Just now, the chairman of the Concerned Kootong Development Union gave his views. We share the same views. And now I'd like to respond to another point. That is, the housing development on the two sides of the original Kootong village office so that we could have housing for resettling villagers in situ. I support the idea. We have done a survey on the housing aspirations of villagers. From the survey, we found that 76.3% of villagers would like in situ resettlement. That's why we have reasons to believe that the majority of Kootong villagers would like to be resettled in situ. We would like to follow examples of Choyun Village and Chuk Yun Village in resettling villagers in situ. I hope the government will give play to our aspiration for in situ rehousing. Thank you. Next, Ms. Peng Cheng from the Kootong Residents' Livelihood Association. Mr. Chairman, members, good morning. I'm the chairman of the Kootong Residents' Livelihood Association. Just now, the chairman of Concerned Kootong Development Union has already given the position of the three associations. Now, we're particularly concerned about the development in Kootong North. I'd like to make two points. Firstly, for the genuine villagers, the administration must do a survey in advance to verify the indigenous villagers' identity. Because some have now moved to the Kootong North, we are concerned that some people trying to capitalize on the development of Kootong and they have moved in. So in future, if there's any development plan, these people may get compensation.
So in future, if there's any development plan, these people may get compensation and resettlement. So we don't want anyone to come in for this purpose. And that's why we must ask the administration to do a proper survey in advance and verify the status of indigenous villagers. And I hope you will find a site in Kootong North to rehouse the villagers. Now, most of the land plots in the Kootong North have been acquired by private developers. Now, if the conventional new town approach is overruled, then the developers would move in. They will start building on the land they've already acquired. As for land not yet acquired by developers, these villagers will face all sorts of bullying tactics by the developers, and villagers will be in dire straits. We do not want villagers to be treated unfairly by developers. That's why the association asks the administration to make sure there is proper arrangement for Kootong North. Thank you. Next, Ms. Law Yik May.
I'm a member of the public concerned about housing in Hong Kong. I'd like to say that the administration should not again use the pretext that there is not sufficient land, so we need land to address housing needs in Hong Kong. And that's how you package the NENT NDA study. I could just cite a few figures that you could easily find from media reports. And then we will see what this project is all about. In 1998, the administration let out news that it would develop a NENT. And then developers started to buy up land on the cheap. And because of the government policy, now developers own one thirteen hundred hectares of land reserved, whereas the government has only three hundred twenty hectares of land reserved. You could find these figures from any news report. And the second set of figures now. Now, it seems that we heard that the government is going to spend $40 billion to resume land, or that could be a public-private partnership. What are we talking about when it's $40 million? For universal retirement plan, it will only cost $50 billion. That's the second set of data. Third set of data. For the one hundred and seventy hectares of land, twenty-one percent would be for residential development. But among the twenty-one percent of the residential land, only forty percent would be used for public housing. And the government's understanding of public housing is that it includes both public rental housing and XOES. So we don't exactly what the ratio is. And for this forty percent of public housing land, it's only part, it's only twenty-one percent of the one hundred and seventy hectares, and it's only a quarter of the twenty-one percent. And then for the rest of the residential development, it will be village-type development. That means the small houses or village-type or low-density development. So if you look at all these three sets of figures, you see what happens. The government allows developers to mass land. And then it comes up with a project that doesn't really benefit the public at all. So we're sacrificing the interests of the general public, is exploitation of the public. And then you try to impose the housing obligations on villagers who do not want their homes to be destroyed. Now, some have suggested using the golf course for development. We've never heard any response from the administration. Why can't it be done? Why must you deal with developers and residents? Why can't you just take the golf course for development? Because it's government land, you only need to serve one year's notice. There is no need to resume land, there's no need to demolish any structure. Why won't you do it? Next, Woodland Crest Owners Committee, Mr. Chee Wai Tom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the NENT NDA study or the release of land, we have no opposition really. But then in the P3 digest, on support facilities, it seems that there's not enough consideration given. So we would like to make three points. Firstly, there will be increase in population and vehicular traffic. That would add pressure to the existing community, especially traffic noise. It will affect people. And then there will be new schools that will also cause noise problems to existing residents. And then now in Samshei or other areas, in NT, we enjoy tranquility. It's a peaceful and tranquil environment. But if we boost the population and we build more facilities, of course, existing residents will be affected. That's the second point, certainly. In terms of community and supporting facilities, we are very concerned about that. Like recreation facilities or road network. Now, in the plan, it said that there will be if the Fanning bypass, and there will be major trunk roads linking up several major trunk roads, for example, Kuen Po Road, Buxiaqiu Road, or under Kootong Roundabout. But if we need to get to those points, that means cars will have to go through existing roads in Samshei and Fanning, that causes us great concern. That will add to the burden of the existing roads. And these roads may not be able to cope with the additional traffic. And there is also an assumption in the study. There will be more railway link, that's the assumption. But then the current East Railway line is already saturated during peak hours. If we had to add another 100,000 population there, well, not all need to commute to these urban areas, but let's say a third or half of that need to commute to the urban areas. Then we won't even be able to stand in the train. That's why we hope the administration will give full consideration to these views as it considers the plan further. On supporting facilities, I'd like to make another point. External connection. Well, we also don't have enough cycling facilities. Thank you.
Salipin Kun from the Association of Engineering Professionals in Professionals in Society Limited. Our association has seriously studied the NENT NDA project. We support this project because we think this project can provide land for more, for housing production and more job opportunities. And in turn, it will also improve our economy. And I have some views on the project. Well, in order to develop an MDA, transportation is of paramount importance. There should be supporting measures. After the projects of the three DNDAs commence, at the same time, there'll also be the development of Lian Tang, Hengyun Y B C P. And there'll be a lot of, there'll be heavy traffic in the area. Well, we note that in the report, there are already relevant transportation measures. So in terms of the specific details, measures should be rolled out to ease the traffic burden. Now, for the population in the NENT, right now, they rely on railway as the main means of transport to be supplemented by the, by mini-buses and buses. There should be, there'll be Kootong Railway Station, et cetera, and the public transport interchange. And the transport network is getting saturated. And the administration should consider constructing the Northern Link as soon as possible so as to divert the passengers. And that should be proper prevention measures against floods because the NENT is a black spot for floods in the past. And there should be improvements to change the situation. And the administration should adopt a new way of thinking in order to combat climate change. And that is, when developing the new towns, more should be done to prevent flooding. And a people-oriented approach should be taken in terms of the overall planning. And over the past decades, we have accumulated much experience in developing new towns. And I think that the experience can be applied to the NENT NDAs. And the administration should balance interests of all parties. More communication should be made with green groups and stakeholders and try to take on board their views. With increased population in the area, there should be more job opportunities so that local residents can work within the district. And more schools and hospitals should also be built. Thank you. Mr. Long Yook Chang from NT Northeast Strategies. Well, our organization suggests that the government should postpone the plan for ten years because the population is projected to be increased to eight point four million from 2030 to 2041. So first of all, we suggest that the conventional new town approach should be adopted in resuming lands. And there should also be measures to assist agricultural activities and food waste recycling and also logistics, et cetera. And talents should be groomed. At the same time, grassroots should be assisted to cope with the soaring food prices. In fact, there are a lot of industrial areas, for example, Hunglok Estate and Tai Po Estate and Onlok Estate in Yunlong. And the financial incentives can be provided for redevelopment of the industrial areas and for more high-rise industrial buildings to be built so as to increase the efficient use of industrial sites. And at the same time, it can also boost the development of research and development. And it can also in turn help develop the industrial areas in Kootong North, et cetera. And according to the plan, there's only forty hectares of land available for public housing, which is five percent. So forty hectares for public housing and another thirty, one hundred and thirty hectares for private housing, well, it is far more than sufficient. There is no need to, there is no urgent need for the NENT NDAs. People-oriented, it should be people-oriented, and housing is just one of the many needs of people. There should also be measures to help people build social networks and help address their schooling needs, et cetera. In the past experience, after the population intake in the new towns, there was a lack of job opportunities. Well, according to the latest statistics, only twenty percent of local residents could work in the, within the districts, whereas over fifty percent of the residents had to travel to Calhoun and Hong Kong for work. So the administration should think about that before diverting the population to NENT. Development should be carried out in the, on the fringe of urban areas or within the urban areas where more job opportunities are available to avoid marginalization. And there should be a NENT Development Bureau or unit so that, to rationalize the plan. Next, Mr. Yao Kin Mo. Thank you, Chairman, members.
Well, our alliance supports the NENT NDA development, and we have the following views. First of all, we think that the housing mix should be refined so that private as well as housing, public housing can be provided. And there should be the Hong Kong property for Hong Kong people conditioned attached so as to address the local housing needs. And more should be done to create more job opportunities. According to the past experience, the administration only attached the importance to housing and not to jobs. And we think that to build a forward-looking and promising new town, apart from housing, there should also be good transport network. And in terms of transportation, we think that the administration should build the Northern Link at the same time to divert passengers from the East Railway line. And the transfer system is already saturated. And with the increased population, increasing population, the pressure on the transport network will be greater. So the Northern Link should be built, which would link Fanning North with Lian Tang. And because of various factors, many Hong Kong enterprises with factories in the mainland are considering coming back to Hong Kong. But the problem is, many of the sites are already developed and the area is far from the mainland. So more commercial and industrial sites should be provided to provide jobs for people in the NENT. So our suggestion is to provide financial incentives to encourage such Hong Kong enterprises to come back to, from the mainland to Hong Kong to operate. And the surrounding area, for example, the Loop area, et cetera, should also come under proper planning. And there should be a holistic approach, including the Tai Po industrial area and the Scientific Park, et cetera, should be considered as well. And in the past, there were many foreign investors in the, in the industrial sector in Hong Kong. And this is the principle for development. And Hong Kong must move forward. Next, Mr. Michael Choi from Long Term Housing Strategies Steering Committee.
Thank you, I'm Choi, I'm Michael Choi. I support the NENT NDA development. We understand that there is an imminent need for more housing. There are over 200,000 PRH applicants on the waiting list. But in the past, we only had a nine, I mean, so far, we only had nine thousand eight hundred units. And the, between 1991 and 2006 annually, only twenty-five thousand five hundred private housing units were supplied. And if we do not do something to change the situation, we will, we will see the same consequence. Well, we talk about an increase in land supply. Well, in fact, it's not true. In fact, over the past, we relied on the development of new towns and reclamation. And since 1973, over the past four decades, we developed nine new towns, including Chin Wan, Shatin, Tuen Moon, Fanning, et cetera. And for these nine new towns, they are already accommodating 3.3 million of the total population, which is 47 percent. If we did, if we had not developed these new towns, where could we have accommodated the 3.3 million population? Some say that the population projections are wrong and that the plan can be postponed. But the fact is, preliminary speaking, according to the plan, 53,000 units are planned. But in fact, we, this will only be sufficient for one year. Housing production will not be completed until 2030. So if we delay things, I am worried that if we take a pessimistic view on things, we cannot move forward. Of course, a compensation or rehousing arrangement should be made for local villagers or residents. We should also respect the views of Concerned Groups and Green Groups. We should strike a balance between development and conservation. But we should not be over pessimistic. We should not refrain from thinking about new ways of providing housing for our people. We should not stick to vague slogans like, we have land for Hong Kong people. We should not be making accusations like selling out Hong Kong, et cetera, et cetera, because Hong Kong is an open city. Thank you. Next, Mr. Hao Chi Kung from Samshei Rural Committee. Well, I speak on behalf of
Well, I speak on behalf of the four Hangs. And I, I absolutely support the administration's development of the N E N T. Well, when we talk about consultation, well, the consultation has gone on for several years. It's really incorrect to say that we knew nothing about it through district councils, etc., etc., that the consultation had been in progress. Well, for Kootong Village and Ma Si Po and Ta Koo Ling, there are many villages, including indigenous and non-indigenous villages. We should not confuse things. Be it indigenous or non-indigenous villages, they should be given the same treatment. Well, if the village is to be cleared, there should be in situ resettlement. The administration should come up with such an arrangement. And if they are rehoused, what about the compensation arrangements? And how will their homes be demolished? The administration should come up with a proper plan and make known to the public. And for the wetland in Long Valley, there are farmers. And I visited them. Over ninety percent of the farmers hope that the administration could resume their lands as soon as possible. You can pay a personal visit yourselves. There are fruit trees. They have been planting fruit trees for years. And all they wanted was for the administration to resume the land as soon as possible. They are already very aged and there are over a hundred farmers outside. They are genuine farmers. Friends of the media, you can go interview them. Well, I only have three minutes. I can't say much. For the Yin Kong Village and Ho Sheng Hang, well, there is a little land left. So I hope that proper planning can be done to relax the village environment and the village boundary. And for conservation, well, we support it as well, but the administration should legislate on these matters. And they should not be placing focus only on conservation and ignoring the rights of private owners. As for mainland Hong Kong integration, well, nowadays, we have globalization, so integration is a good thing. I totally support it. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chu Huitick from Land Justice League. Now let us bear in mind that for the N E N T N D A, this may be the largest development and eviction of local residents in forty years. It's such a large-scale project. When we talk about the development of new towns in the past, well, I'd like to remind everyone that those were done during the colonial era. And in the course, very often, people's right to know and the residents' rights were being deprived of. And now that we have reunited with the mainland, should we adhere to the same practice of disrespecting such rights? Now, for the N E N T N D A development, again, we see the administration is using the same trick again. They line up with the rich, the developers and the interested parties to oppress the disadvantaged group. And I'm talking about the non-indigenous farmers. They have been living in the villages for decades. They rented farmlands to practice farming. So they are in a disadvantaged position. Now during the stage one consultation, according to the paper, the administration said that since twenty oh eight, the local residents' concerns have been rehousing arrangements. So all along since twenty oh eight, the administration has already in mind eviction of local residents. And the local residents are now given limited information only. I don't agree with Mr. Hao Chi Keng because about Ta Koo, about Ta Koo Ling, the villagers did not know about the arrangements until this summer during the P E three exercise. And there are a lot of open container yards and so on and so forth, and they're polluting our river. And when we want to develop a new town, we must place, attach more importance to environmental protection. There has been much damage already, so damage should be prevented. For example, there are container yards and car yards. And if we want to develop a new town, these sites should be chosen first.
Now, we've listened to deputations, individuals and organizations. And now it's time for panel members to raise questions. I would like to propose three minutes for each member to cover each Q and A session. So please be brief. First, Ms. Emily Lau. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to thank the deputations for coming here to the Lushco to express your views. Chairman, I think we have over one hundred and thirty deputations here. And next weekend, next Saturday, we will be listening to deputations all day as well. The public knows this is a very controversial project. Some are for it, some propose shelving the plan. For example, the Democratic Party, and some ask for a delay of ten years. So I think the administration should be cautious in listening to us. Now, I agree with Ms. Oh Young. Consultation means you respect other people. It's not forcing your views on others. For example, the government is advertising what is not a policy yet. Now, the Secretary for Development is not here. This is very regrettable. He knows on a Saturday, hundreds of people are here to express their views, and still he chooses not to come. This is irresponsible. Now, about land reserve, how come the figure is so confusing? They keep changing the figure. It's all very confusing. Now, we have so many views already. I really am interested in what the administration has to say. Greensense, they have been repeating this point a lot on many occasions. That is about developing this one hundred and seventy hectare golf course in N E N T. Is it the case that you cannot develop that lot? Rather, you are demolishing other people's homes. So don't trample on the disadvantaged group, as Mr. Chu Huitick has told you. Don't chase them away. Now, the administration says we will not drive them away, but they are not offering assistance. Now, this plan has been here for a long time. Yes, the Deputy Secretary. So should I answer now or later? Of course now. Let's not waste time. We've had three public engagement exercises. And while we have already completed with all the P Es, still we're very happy to take in views in the three P Es. We will be taking in the views expressed this weekend and next Saturday. And we will make adjustment to the development plan accordingly. As for land available for use or land reserve, we have made clarifications in Lushco on many occasions. And the information has been uploaded for public inspection. So the information is very clear.
Madam Chang, thank you, Chairman. On behalf of D A B, I welcome the deputations. Personally, as soon as I came to know the N E N T development, I think it is for a better planning for the whole area. Later, members of the public have expressed their worries and we came to know many other problems. So I think the administration should have more consultation sessions and take in many more views. Now, Ms. Ho said the administration should take into account the population projection. Now, even if we have development in northeast new territories, you may also have to go to northwest. With population projection, even if you reclaim land, you may not be able to address the housing need. Now, the last administration did not have any population policy. I think this is the area that the current administration should look at. Having listened to the deputations, also I have the following questions. First, Hong Kong has a large population but limited land. Now, people are worried with this development plan. Are we giving our land to mainlanders or will the area be turned into a city for wealthy mainlanders? Will it be turned into a backyard for mainlanders? I think we shouldn't be worried that much. Because the, because Hong Kong in its entirety is a kind of backyard for them at weekends. The mainlanders come to Hong Kong for shopping. Now, of course, we should stick to the principle that in developing this area, we are here, we serve Hong Kong people. Now, turning to Mr. Chu's point, no matter what we do, we should not oppress the disadvantaged groups. If we really oppress them, I hope you will tell us for purchase of land or things that are unjust to Hong Kong people. If you discover such cases, you have to let me know because we're here to protect the interests of Hong Kong people. Permanent Secretary, population, you know that the administration is working on the population policy. According to the latest projection by the Census Statistics Department in the next, there will be an increase of one point four million people in the next forty years. That's why we have to address the growth in population. For N E N T development, we have already said that we would like to raise the ratio of public housing to up to over fifty percent. That is to serve Hong Kong people, and most of the flats will be of small and medium size. And we may roll out Hong Kong properties for Hong Kong people when necessary. And let me read out the names. Ms. Chen, Mr. Chen and Mr. Paul Che, Mr. Wong Wei Kuo, Ms. Chan Yuen Han. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, deputations, for coming here in the early morning. Now, we have opposing views and supporting views. Now, I have questions for the administration. In developing a certain area, we, the F T U does not oppose the development plans, but it doesn't mean that you have to demolish the homes of the existing residents. I've visited Long Valley. Farming activities are there. But then some people may like to have development. And they do not have land available to them. Ma Shi Po, there are already farming activities. Are you going to take away the farmland there? To cultivate a piece of good farmland, it takes a long time. And we have expert farmers here, so you know more about this than me. Last time, we talked to administration together with some experts. We asked if the administration had any agricultural policy. Paul Che said yes. And we said, if that's the case, then how can you protect the farmers who are already farming there? And what will happen if the new job opportunities are not there and after you have cleared away the farmlands? I would not say I disagree with Mr. Hao. But then, if you, you may not like to be a farmer, but it doesn't mean that other people do not want to be farmers. I've listened to the villagers, so I hope the administration will not pit one group of people against another. Land in Hong Kong is not just for building flats, like Mr. Michael Choi has said. We need planning. So what sort of planning do you have in terms of building flats? So, Mr. Chow, Permanent Secretary, please answer my questions. I have to stress, don't pit one group against another. We should have reasonable planning. This is what F T U is supports.
In terms of planning, we hope to minimize impact on farmers and local residents. But it's inevitable that some people stand to be affected. But I hope we can make good arrangement for them. For P E two exercise, we have listened to views on Long Valley. That's why we made amendments and proposed that we should have a nature park of thirty-seven hectare. To have this park in Long Valley, and we can have non-organic farming and organic farming there. And we will continue with our communication with the various groups. And for lots in north and south of Long Valley, we have about forty-five hectare. And today now, we have another piece of land. So altogether, these pieces of land amount to over ninety hectare, which...
Now, I think the people who want to be farmers, they can go to nearby places to continue with farming. Ms. Chen, thank you for coming here, deputations. But I would like to apologize too, because it seems that we ask you to come here. And you were here to talk to Mr. Paul Che directly, but then Mr. Chen is not going to be here today. And lawmakers are here to ask Mr. Chen's question, and we cannot, we cannot slam the civil servants here because there's just civil servants. Now, my question is, do you have a working timetable? And if so, what is it like? People are worried that this is going to be a kind of plan for building backyards for mainlanders. The administration keeps saying that there is this condition of Hong Kong properties for Hong Kong people, but they are not clear about the details. Five percent of land for Hong Kong people and fifty percent for Hong Kong people are very different. So is this development plan for the, for Hong Kong people or mainlanders? The golf course mentioned by a group, can you consider developing that? We've been listening to low and high-density development and building of, a ratio of, between private and public housing. It seems that you keep changing the figures. So after the three consultation exercises, do you have the latest? So after the three consultation exercises, do you have the latest figure concerning the ratio? Permanent Secretary. Now, some people think that we have hidden agenda with this development plan. But I have to stress that that's not the case. The government does not have any hidden agenda. The N E N T development is for Hong Kong people. In fact, we started the planning a long time ago. For types of housing, we have already made it clear that we will raise the ratio of public housing to over fifty percent. Land for private housing. Most of the these flats will be of small and medium size, which are suitable flats for Hong Kong people. So we're not building backyard for Shenzhen people. The whole plan is for the benefit of Hong Kong people. Just now, the golf course in Finland was mentioned and since nineteen thirty is being used by Hong Kong Golf Club under the private recreational ground lease. Is is not expired yet. Now, a present railway cannot reach the golf course. But we have already allocated land for Kootong Station in Kootong. So we already have transportation network planned there. Now, we have been working on the planning of N E N T for many years. If we shift our focus to the golf course today, then we will need more time for planning. In that case, we cannot provide much needed land for Hong Kong people. What about the timetable and the ratio for land for Hong Kong properties for Hong Kong people? But times up. Deputy Chairman. First of all, welcome deputations for coming here to express your views on N E N T development. Now, we have heard many good proposals and many questions have been raised. My first question to the Permanent Secretary. Now, in terms of development, people usually have this impression that the government does not show enough respect to local residents. Now, you may say you have set aside agricultural land. But even from consultation, I haven't heard any concrete plans as to how we can turn agricultural development into a kind of industry. For northern link. Some people have raised this under the transportation issue. Agricultural policy is not under our bureau, but we have asked the relevant bureau or department for the relevant information. Under the existing agricultural policy will provide low interest loan and technical support to the trade, to modernize farming and to produce safe and valued food. Coming back to development of agriculture, we have reserved an over ninety hectare of land for farmers so that they can carry on with farming on the agricultural land. Other than that, we also have relocation. If you can prove to the A F C D that you are indeed a farmer and you are affected by the development plan, so that you have to rent another lot for farming. The government can grant you a place for farming. Now, follow up question. I think the government is rigid. The farming policy is under A F C D. Have you got anything that targets the N E N T development? Because some people are already farming on good lots already. The existing policy does not target the affected residents. You cannot simply adopt the mindset you have been using for the past decades. How can you make sure the affected people stand to benefit under the development plan? I hope you can work together to come up with a better mindset. Mr. Lo, thank you Chairman. First of all, I have to thank the deputations for coming here. You represent different stakeholders, different concerned groups. But all your views are valuable to us. My question is similar to the one raised by Deputy Chairman. Now, railway is the backbone of the transport policy in Hong Kong. This is very clear already. Are we going to go ahead with northern link? Because the link is crucial to the development of the area. I've talked to engineers and we agree that if we have a firm position on railway development, we may accommodate more than one hundred and fifty thousand people in N E N T. Now, some deputations asked, since the land is so since land is so valuable, how come we cannot make planning to accommodate more people? Another question. Now, you say you have to address the employment needs of local residents. That's why you have the N E N T development. For industrial development policy, I think we should not just focus on the major ones. Agriculture or farming is also important. So I think the administration should have long-term policy to cover industrial development, including farming. Because of time constraint, the deputations may not be able to say their whole speech. But then some have raised the interest of affected non-indigenous people. We have rural committee heads here and heads from indigenous people here. So I want to ask the administration, what are you going to do to balance the interests of indigenous and on indigenous villages? I don't think they should be pitted against each other.
Permanent Secretary? Well, as some pointed out just now, perhaps we could increase housing supply by way of increasing the plot ratio. With the if the public infrastructure could support it, we would try to increase the housing supply. Now, in Pingchee, Takku Ling, currently, the transportation network is not so well developed. So in the P E three, we proposed low-density development. At the same time, actually, the Transport Housing and Housing Bureau is now doing review of the rail development, Railway Development Strategy two thousand. Then maybe the review will give us some room to see whether we could increase the development density in Pingchee and Takku Ling. Thank you. Mr. Gary Feng, thank you. I have two points to make and I have a question as well.
I would like to thank the various deputations and individuals coming here to give their views. Now, it's a great pity that Mr. Paul Chen is not here. Now, Mr. Paul Chen has a low popularity. It's not just because about his own subdivided flat problem, but this is an important policy area in his portfolio, but he's not here to meet with deputations. It's really a great pity. Mr. Choi Ah Min and a few mentioned today that Hong Kong is an open city. We welcome integration. This must be good for Hong Kong because then we could take development forward. You know, it's never wrong to mention such broad principles because that's the case around the world. But when it comes to the actual implementation details, that's what matters. We have very valuable land resources. Maybe in a site, we could build one thousand public rental housing units. Instead, it's used to build one hundred luxurious flat units costing millions of dollars. Like what happened in the first quarter of twenty twelve. You know, forty-four percent of the luxury properties in Hong Kong are not bought by Hong Kong residents and there is still a long waiting list for public rental housing. People have been waiting for years for public rental housing. So that's what we mean by that Hong Kong people's interests are not taken care of. So that's the real problem. Why can't you even come to grip with that? Even today, Mr. Chow is saying that this is a project for the people of Hong Kong. But when it comes to the actual implementation details, you can't really deliver on that front. That's what it is about. And then some members asked questions and some also responded to the green sense proposal. The golf course, one hundred and seventy hectares of land. The Permanent Secretary said that there is not proper transportation link. But then let's not forget, today, many talked about Kootong and other places. They all say that there is insufficient transportation link. So if we go by the same logic, this is something the government could do to do work on. Why do we want to build the land tongue boundary control point? Because we want to support the development of N E N T northeast. This can be done through planning, so why aren't you doing it? And then you said the Home Affairs Bureau is responsible for the lease due to expire in twenty twenty. I've read the lease. The term is that the government needs only serve one year's notice and then the land could resume. Is that true? Is there such a term in the lease? So let's leave give the government the power to resume the land. Then we could substantially boost the land supply, which is a hot topic these days. I think you've asked too many questions. There's no time. So for the Permanent Secretary to reply, so please be brief, Permanent Secretary. Housing issue. You know that there are various housing needs in Hong Kong. You must understand that. So apart from public housing, while we have already pledged to check to increase the percentage to fifty, but there is still a strong need for public-private housing in Hong Kong. We must bear that in mind. The golf course, as I mentioned, we've been working on the N E N T N D A's planning for ages. And if we want to consider the golf course idea, it will take many years again. Now, you're answering a different question. I'm asking whether there is such a term in the lease. You just only need to say yes and no. From the information given by the Home Affairs Bureau, yes, there is such a term. So you say that you it's not true what you said that we have to wait till the expiry of the lease in twenty twenty. No, I did not say that we have to wait till twenty twenty. I'm just pointing out the fact that is the current private recreational land lease will expire in twenty twenty. Now, we have to watch the time. We want to allow everybody a chance to speak. But then everybody is overrunning. And there's still three members on the list. Well, draw the line there. Because I'd like to give members a fifty-minute break so you could do a bit of exercise, perhaps. Wong Chuk Thai, Kenneth Chen and James Ten. Okay, I'll draw the line there. That's not the end of the special meeting. We still have session this afternoon and next week. Wong Chuk Thai. I here represent people, just amount for the in relation to the N E N T N D A. I would ask all seven members to visit the two villages to see whether there is a need or term to do come and visit Long Valley so you see what the situation is like there. Now, the village representative said that has been dispused over the years. Now, you have from side to side for conservation. And land owners, stakeholders, they rent the land to us for a few hundred dollars a year. Is it really fair to them? We feel sorry for them. And the conservation groups, I don't know if they are the genuine conservation groups or not. But they 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 talk about conservation, but they chase away all the birds. Then you should, if you really care about conservation, get rid of the birds because birds have eaten all our crops. We've been reflecting our problems to the previous chief executive, Mr. Tsung. Farmers, including myself, put in so much effort to farm there. We grow vegetables. I start work every morning at six. And a day or two, the birds eat up all our crops. And members, you just sit here and you earn over a hundred thousand dollars a month. Do you not understand the plight we are in as farmers? Now, farmers are the hardworking of all trades and we do not enjoy any subsidy from the government. But farmers stride on. And do you know how old our farmers are? Thirty percent of them are between the age of sixty and eighty. They are working so hard quietly to contribute to society, but have you ever thought for our interest? That's why today I'm really emotional. I hope the government would do something about the Long Valley wetland. And you have to see whether there's a need for N E N T N D A development. Everybody wants wholesome vegetable, but if we don't have land, how can we provide such vegetables? Now, in my farm, I'm doing organic farming. My next-door neighbor stopped farming and then the far water goes to flows to my land and all my vegetables are there. So how can we do anything at all? When we set up this local farmers' organization, we wanted to do something about food safety. And we would really like to promote organic farming within the association. Thank you. We've heard your views. We'll pay it. And next, Mr. Kenneth Chen. I again, I'm indignant that Mr. Paul Chen is absent for the whole day. He has to explain why he's not here. And if next week he has time, he really should come to listen to the views of the deputations. Mr. Leung, just now, the Permanent Secretary answered your questions about the farmland. You were shaking your head, so I'd like to listen more to you. Mr. Chu Hui-Take also said something, but he stopped short of giving the full information about the disadvantaged groups. So I hope you would both tell us a bit more. Mr. Leung first, perhaps. Mr. Leung and Mr. Chu, I would like to give them some time to say more. Mr. Leung.
About the farmland policy. Yeah, there should be a positive policy to support farming development. We shouldn't just have passive policy. Now, the government says that farmers must first find land and then they will help them. But the problem now is there is no land. Most of land is held by private owners now. And even if it's government land, farmers have to go through open tendering before they could secure the land. So how could you expect farmers to find land for resuming farming? That's why we're saying that the government should actively identify agricultural land as currently engaged in active farming and then it could be used by farmers. Please allow me to make another point. The housing mix, I think the figures given are mostly misleading. The housing mix between public and private housing, that's on the basis of units. So it's easy for the government to adjust the percentage to over fifty. That is, you build more units on the public housing land and then you could achieve that target. It doesn't mean you are increasing the land area for public housing. Thank you, Mr. Leung. And Mr. Chu Hui-Take, next please. Mr. Chu.
Non-indigenous residents, I'd like to make two points. First one, if the administration takes very seriously the three stages of public engagement since twenty oh eight, and I must make this point. You know, this is like a cumulative effort in your public engagement stages, one to three. Stage one, you said what you wanted to do. Stage two, you came up with a preliminary plan. Stage three, you came up with a recommended plan. So I'm saying that if a large number of Takku Ling and Pingchee residents will have to be evicted, they only find out in stage three. That means they knew nothing in stage one, just one and two, they were not involved. That means they knew nothing in stage one, just one and two, they were not involved. So that's why in your plan now, you did not really include this group of residents. So does that make your public engagement still valid? Second point, I agree with Ms. Chen Yuen-han. We need the participation of residents now. If we didn't do a proper job before, we're saying that the project will only be completed by twenty twenty. So we still had, have some age years. So why can't we make right what we've done wrong? And for the three NDAs, is there a bottom-up approach in planning? Has the government, would the government put more money in there? I think you really have overrun a lot. Perhaps you could give your views in writing, we still have plenty of opportunities to meet. Next, Mr. James Tan.
We've received many written submissions. We've all been to NENT East and NENT West. We've heard a lot of views already. Now, Permanent Secretary, we've been talking about this project for years. You know, you've been doing consultation for five, six, ten years, still people are saying that it's not enough. And there are still new stakeholders. Now, when you started your stage one and stage two public engagement, these people weren't living in this area yet. They weren't working there, now they are there, so they have views as well. So how can you incorporate their views as well? And if you want to engage the new stakeholders, I hope it won't take another five or ten years, because then it would just be perpetual public engagement and we can't get anything done. Because then, maybe in another three years' time, some new residents move in, you have to consult them again. Then you keep consulting, you could never embark upon the development.
I think we, there are plenty of examples that we have to avoid. Many have said, this must not be the second Tingshui Y. And Mr. Gary Feng saying that, saying that we should build more public housing. But if there's only public housing, there are no shops, no retail activities, no one gets work. Then it would be another Tingshui Y. It won't be a good idea. Of course, I don't mean to stigmatize Tingshui Y. Now, you say that there should be more than fifty percent public housing. And for private housing, we're not talking about luxury housing, but we can build more small-to-medium-sized units. Now, shouldn't there be comprehensive development? There should be schools, I don't know about hospital, but at least there should be clinics, community halls, sports grounds, swimming pools and so on. And another point is important. If we want to take this project forward quickly, there is a lot of land now owned by private developers. Must the government resume all such land from developers and residents before you could start your plan? Can we have PPP, public-private partnership? And could you also take into account the farming activities? That is, you leave the farmland intact in your development, would that work?
Permanent Secretary. In PE3, we proposed a conventional new-town approach for development. Because we believe then it would be easier for the government to control the program and that all the irrelevant public facilities, as those mentioned by Mr. James Tan. The completion of this facility is good at time with the occupation intake. At the same time, we have designated land for public facilities or even retail activities or various services. I would ask my colleague to give you further details. While we're running out of time. Please allow the Assistant Secretary to say something.
Now, our development is people-based, that's our guiding principle. We consider the needs of future residents and existing residents in new towns for various community and transport or traffic facilities. We go by the Hong Kong Planning Standards and Guidelines. In the three NDAs, there will be various community facilities, such as primary schools, secondary schools, kindergartens, police facilities, fire services facilities and other community facilities. There are actually eleven primary schools, seven secondary schools, seventeen kindergartens. There is also a site reserved for hospital purpose. And there's also an integrated medical facility site. Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, we are running out of time. I know many colleagues and deputation representatives would like to speak again, but I will have to end the session here, because there is a second session and there are other representatives waiting to speak. Mr. Chairman, can you clarify a point? Just now, a few members kept saying that Mr. Paul Chen is not here. And Mr. Gary Feng has actually asked the Permanent Secretary, has called the Permanent Secretary, the director, please, that's not the case. Please do not mislead the deputations. The Permanent Secretary is in charge of planning matters in the bureau. Apart from Mr. Paul Chen, he is the highest-ranking official on planning matters. So I think we need to clarify that point. Thank you. Now, I hope you would submit your prepared speeches to the secretary. Please sign your name there and then the secretary could liaise with you as necessary. So please let us have your written text, if you've been reading out from it. And now we have a break of fifteen minutes. Thank you.